All right, ladies and gentlemen, called order, our special city council workshop meeting, August 2nd. Second item on the agenda is the discussion concerning our sales tax planning.
All right, I've had a, yeah, I've had a few discussions with you guys, and I know that I've given you guys a worksheet that's the second page about every month for the last several months, probably since January, but the first page is what I want you guys to pay attention to. I put it in a new format. So, the question has always been, what are we paying for? When are we paying for it? And how are we paying for it? So, that's the three areas that I gave you. So, you can actually see for the next five years, from 2017 through 2021, exactly what the proposed projects are, what the cost of those proposed projects are at today, then the funding mechanism for each one of those projects. So, hopefully, it's a little bit easier to understand, but on the next page, you can see how, once the funding mechanism is implemented, exactly what those payments will be for each one of those fiscal years going all the way through 2031. So, in year 2017, which would be the fiscal year 2016-17, you've got to see the very first thing is equipment purchase for street overlay, costs $250,000. Funding mechanism is just the cash that we have on hand as the collections start coming in in September of this year. The next project, Waste Water Treatment Plant.
So, that is, that is, that equipment in addition to what we've already purchased, didn't we purchase some equipment already?
No.
This is a truck, right?
No, it's an overlay machine.
It's a machine?
Yes, that's about $150,000. Then I'll be in conversations with Tanya and Maxine concerning what other equipment we're going to be needing, including possibility of trucks, rollers, and some other miscellaneous equipment out there in there. That's the budget that I have right now for what I believe the estimates will be for those actual equipment, and it'll go for the actual construction of streets and overlaying the streets, that equipment, so.
And, 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 of course, we're not talking about any of the supplies necessary to make that happen?
No, no, this is just equipment. And well, as you'll see, for 2018, 19, 20, and 21, you'll see street improvements combined with the user fee through all out those years, and you will actually see the amount out there, we collect somewhere in about $235,000 a year in user fees, and that's been going over to our road projects. If we combine that with the $50,000 from what I have budgeted in every year for capital improvement projects, you have a budget of about a quarter million every year to go back towards street improvements.
I got a question. So, can you clarify cash on hand versus series 2016 bond versus special revenue bond?
Cash on hand is actually, yeah, cash on hand is actually the cash that we have in the bank account, and we'll go out there and purchase it via our purchasing card or check or whatever.
And that's still our sales tax, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this is all sales tax. This is all three quarters in sales tax. Series bonds is just what we just did. We did, we refinanced the 2010 series bonds for the Waste Water Treatment Plant. We borrowed an additional $3 million, $780,000 approximately for Waste Water Treatment Plant engineering, and then the other $2.2 million for design and engineering of the pool and the construction of the pool. And that's the 2016 series bond. Lease purchase, of course, just lease purchase, we'll go out and take competitive bids on that, and then later on down the roads, I go through some of that, we'll have some additional areas that you'll see on the funding mechanisms. The second one, Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements, that's what we just approved last month, $780,000 for the engineering for a plant improvements. Next one is the purchase of ladder truck. We'll be looking at it sometime this fall, again, lease purchase on that. Estimated cost right now about $850,000 based upon when you guys bid it out last time. Design for city pool improvements, that's what we'll be talking about on the next agenda item, about $215,000 for the design. Again, already have money in the bank in order to pay for that. Construction of new Summit View Cemetery Fence, originally had $350,000 on, if you guys look back at your old sheets, we got engineering cost estimate of about $281,000. So, that's actually come down a bit on that. Again, we'll be paying for it once we start collecting that tax. Fleet maintenance purchase program, you'll see that through all five years, $100,000, whatever cash we have on hand to go out there and make improvements in our fleet. Miscellaneous youth and senior activities, got about $100,000 in there this year, just to go out and make some improvements, probably the Highland Hall, and maybe some other youth activities out there too, or maybe even some other senior activities out there, those are to be determined this, this year as we go through, but that's one of the things that was on our list to be improved, so I'll place those in there this year.
I got a question, you're talking about Highland Hall. I know at the very front, we've had some problems with it being cracked, and there are some, just places on the front that have some improvement needs. Is that going to be included in this at all?
Maybe. I don't know about those, so I'll have to look into that, see what those, those are. So, Jim's shaking his head too, so we don't know exactly what those cracks are, but we'll look into it.
Our neighborhood association has been focused on that.
On the fence side that you can build out, is that going to be for the new section?
It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be on the northern end and on the western end, and the southern end, we may not go on the eastern side or the most south portion where that new 12 acres has been constructed yet. We do have preliminary plans for how it should be lauded and platted, but we're currently in conversations with Blue and Maxine also concerning where we possibly having, have a scattered, scattered gardens and baby land. So, we don't know if that's going to be on the new section, possibly a place for the old section, but wherever we're driving around, and you can see very easily, we'll definitely have that fenced up. And I think it will be good neighbors too, with the private cemetery that's currently on the south side too. So, that's what we're looking at. And I think the, the engineers also had put a new entrance way, both on the western side and on the corner, maybe some new type of rock or brick structure there to make it a little bit nicer on the corner there too. So, as people come in from either direction, they'll be welcomed by Summit View Cemetery and sign, so.
Thank you.
Finally, the last one, 2017, this is the possibility, if it goes through, with Oklahoma Historical Society and possibly OMBES concerning the publishing museum. I'm just calling convention center for at this point in time, so there's also other plans out there that could have for that particular facility, but right now, just, we haven't got actual cost, even for, I got some budgetary costs that you'll see on the next page, but currently, some conversations with some architects that if we're allowed to go in there and take a look at it over the next few months, we'll come back and update that cost on what it'd be to actually go in there and have a architect and structural engineer to look through the building floor by floor and give us a cost estimate on what it actually costs to, to bring it up to the use that we need necessary, so. 2018, of course, 2017, we have the design, then 2018 is city pool improvements construction. Again, preliminary estimate on that is about $2 million, special revenue bond, well, actually, we already have that, that's incorrect, that should be series 2016 bond on that, we already have the money in the bank for that. Right below that, again, we design this year, build next year for Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements. Again, estimate right now is about $10 million. Street improvements, fleet, and you guys will see that repeated every year for the next three years, even beyond 2018-19. And finally, the possibility of a convention center construction. I've heard estimates everywhere from a few, oh, tens of thousands of dollars all the way up to $6 million to improve that facility, and so I want to figure out exactly what that is for the use that we determine if we're able to take ownership of that building, so. But right now, that's just kind of a rough estimate out there, $350,000 a year for the next 14 years, about $3.5 million in there, so I took all the middle numbers I heard and stuck it in there. 2019, this is when we start looking at our splash pad and our sports parks. I don't know if it's going to be a sports park or sports parks yet, and that's why you see the parentheses around the S, but right now, the design for the splash pad is about $75,000, it's going to be about 10% of the $750,000. Total cost of construction and the sports park design, again, I'm actually having that one a little bit lower, about 5% or 6% of what we can believe the total construction cost on that, so they're a little bit simpler to design than some of the other things that we're working on here. Then, so, between that and 2019, we're hoping that we'll be in conversation with OAA, Oklahoma Air and Ops Association, to be part of their new terminal grant project. I know that Big Bird, the director of OAA, has already indicated to us he'd like to see us within that three-year program, so I plugged that in there now, just so we know what our total costs are going forward with that three quarters in sales tax. And whatever we do, at least half of it's going to be paid by the City of Edmond, and I can't remember whether or not that terminal design is part of the total grant, or there's another part that's above and beyond that just for the design portion, and we've got plenty of time over the next three years to figure that out, so I can go back and look what we did. 2019 finishes out with streets and fleet again, and 2020, just all the things I went over, construction of the splash pad, construction of the sports parks, and construction of the airport terminal, and again, those are the same numbers I just, just told you there, about two and a half million for sports parks, a million dollars for the airport terminal, but you can see a lot of that from, is from our cash on hand, split 50/50 with Edmond, and OAA grants also 50/50, so we're actually paying one quarter of that portion on that particular project. So, hopefully, that's a little bit more clear than what I go when I talk to our city treasurer about, about where's the money coming from, why is it coming out of there, when's it coming out, all those kinds of things. Then on your second page, at the very bottom right-hand corner, even after factoring all those projects year by year for the next 15 years, you guys still see, I still left to continue seeing there of about $1.7 million, which is approximately about, you know, 10% of continuously in there, and a lot of the projects that I have plugged in these numbers are coming in below what our estimates are so far, just because I like to estimate high and have a little bit of comfort on going forward on executing those particular projects. So, at the end of the day, hopefully, we'll have even more than that left over. Just, for example, just like the cemetery fence, is that, I originally estimated about $350,000. We have engineering estimates of $281,000, and hopefully, we'll have enough hungry contractors out there that won't come in and even bid lower than that. So, any questions?
Where's the sports park? Yeah, in, on the second page.
It is within the youth and senior activities, as you see about 2020 that I have it on there, so.
Okay, I see. So, again, these, these years that you've got here, are those fiscal years or calendar years?
Fiscal years.
They're fiscal.
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's, that would be the fiscal year ending 2017, fiscal year ending 2018. It's close, it's only a couple of months off, but.
And, and tell me, initially when we were talking, I think that the, that the sports parks.
Yes.
Had a higher, higher start time. What happened that you're now proposing that we move that back?
Location. We've got to determine locations.
So, have you got that worked out with the state?
We have not.
Are we hearing anything at all?
Very little, but again, if we have to keep locations or change locations, that's just a time-consuming process, so, but we haven't got any further update, and I haven't pushed it that hard either because we haven't collected a penny yet, so we have more than enough time to execute this over the next 15 years, so. But yeah, if something becomes available and we can execute it sooner, we may move that on up. So, these are all estimated timeframes right now.
And of course, in our previous discussions, the convention center wasn't even a.
Yep.
A spot on it because that wasn't an opportunity.
Yes.
Which it is now. So, in the convention center, it's TBD, are we waiting, we're not quite sure, we're starting this fiscal year within?
Uh, no, just because there, there's been conversations between the Historical Society and OMBES concerning what process they're going to be using in order to facilitate the transfer of its ownership, and they haven't even determined it yet. So, once they figure that out, hopefully, they'll involve me, then I can go out there and get in an agreement that allows us time to study the project and allows us to have access to the building so we can go in there and have our architects and structural engineers give us a report on exactly what condition it is as of today's date.
So, is the 300, the next year, 350,000, is that probably more like design and?
No, that's.
That's actually doing payments on it?
Yes, that's if we find something that we find that we like, and it has a use, and we begin the construction, that would be a payment for that.
Okay. Okay, very good. Other questions?
Got some comments. So, getting back to, are, were we finished with this? And ready to move on to the next agenda item?
We don't have any other questions?
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the swimming pool improvements.
There we go.
Okay. Bruce?
Yep. Handing out some detailed information for you.
Thank you.
Give you one. What you guys have before you are the last payment application for the City of Grove's pool, where it's constructed, we'll see that on the screen here in a second, but also gave you a even newer pool that's being currently built in Lindsay, Oklahoma, and we'll also see pictures of that here in a second too. But I have itemized details of exactly what everything cost in the construction of a pool, from the bonds that the contractors have to pay, to them actually mobilizing, to site work, to the concrete, to the pumps, to the amenities, to the equipment, all in detail, line by line, so you can actually see what it cost to construct a pool. And you'll see the differences between the two here in a second, and first, I want to start off just by, with what we currently have and what the thought process was behind what's being proposed.
How big is that pool?
It's essentially Olympic-sized swimming pool.
Olympic-sized?
Yeah, it's about a 50-meter and 25-meter wide type of pool, so.
Karim Zikir.
What's that?
Ozeka.
Ozeka, as far as I know. Our pool was built in 1946, that concrete had been curing for the last 60 years, so it's pulled, it's pulled apart from itself pretty good. We leak quite a bit of water out of that on a daily basis and needs to be refilled. A couple of years ago, you guys went in and did some major work on the guts of the pool. The pumps are new, some of the piping within the pump house is new, but that's pretty much it when it comes to anything that we can call new on that pool. The bath house was constructed at the same era, it's a dark deco type of facility right now, and right now, people park all along the north and west side, of course, enter through this portion right here of the bath house. We have both a women's and a men's changing stations inside, and we have a, underneath, we have that men's side, we have a small little area which we pack in some different equipment. Some of the big issues, of course, with our pool is that we have stairs that are pretty steep, they go from the bath house down to the pool decking. And right now, that's not necessarily ADA compliant, and this year, we went out and purchased a mobile device which allows us to put anybody that may need access to our pools and have a disability that still wants to be in our pool to be able to get in our pool, but we still have a big problem, first and foremost, with just getting them to the decking on our pool. Each and every year, Blue has explained to me, we go out there and we paint the deck, and we also paint the interior of that pool. So, that costs anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000 to $6,000 a year just to open that thing up, just, just for our purposes of having a swimming pool each and, each and every year.
So, is the deck peeling every year, or is that the deal?
It just fades and peels, and just sort of general wear and tear too. Some of the other major issues we have is that over the years, every, every diving board or other amenity that we've had at our pool has been taken away by the Oklahoma Department of Health. The Oklahoma Department of Health is the ones that regulate municipal pools across the state of Oklahoma. Currently, we have a little lip that is about six inches out and about a foot and a half to two feet deep that goes around our entire pool. And anytime that you have an amenity where someone's sliding in or jumping into the pool, they don't want another lip or barrier underneath that water that people may or may not see, regardless of how far the diving board is out, regardless of how far that slide is out, they still believe that someone may end up getting their foot hung up or their head hit on that. So, that's why you don't see any amenities around our pool. It's just straight rectangle, straight, back and forth, you have a shallow end and a deep end, but nothing above and beyond that. They do have swim lessons out there and some other recreational type of health exercises too, classes that take place usually over here in the shallow end. If you do see any shade structures out there, they were not purchased by the city, that was purchased by the Highland Hall Association, yeah, Highland Hall Neighborhood Association, get their whole title in there, and they've done a very good job of going out and purchasing those for the last couple of years, and purchased some primary color shade that matches the rest of our equipment out there. So, that's currently our pool, sits in the middle of Highland Park, as you can see the road that goes around there, and over here, we have a play structure, we have a shelter, we have an asphaltic basketball court, and those are the primary features, and of course, on the south side, you have your basketball courts over here. So, when I was originally looking for a location for our pool.
That's a hell of a basketball.
Tennis courts.
Oh, tennis courts, my bad, tennis courts. Those don't even have pickleball in there, so I feel bad. Those are the location. So, when I was originally looking at the location, my first thought was not to build in the same location. I don't like taking a structure out of the ground and moving it elsewhere, then going back and try to utilize that same hole, because we're not going to be utilizing the same shape, and again, 60 years of curing concrete, you never know what's right on there. I'm sure it's packed down well enough, but I have no idea what type of packing materials they used to begin with before they poured that concrete out there. So, what I was looking at is try to figure out the best way to construct a pool and have the least amount of moving of other amenities that we have in the park. So, I looked at going due south, but there's two issues that we had. One, of course, is the walking trail, and secondly, is there's a topography issue where those tennis courts are substantially higher than our pool. There's a nice hill out there that may get a little bit more difficult to build on that side. So, I thought about going on the south side of it there, and that's when I started to begin to have some discussions with some other pool designers to try to figure out what would be a good idea for our current situation, and that's when I brought you guys the one from Tiffany Springs, and we'll look at that a little bit later on, but you'll see the issues that I have with a new pool construction, and Aaron, you can go to the next slide. This is the City of Lindsay, this is the one that's currently under construction, and their price tag right now is $1.8 million. So, you can see that they originally had a splash pad over here, and they've constructed the pool on the side of that splash pad. They're hitting a new bath house, they're getting a couple of stray structures, one diving board, one slide, and a couple of little water features over here at the zero entry end. So, that's kind of the going rate today of what the cost of pool, pools are. I think there's a lot of variables in there that we can play with to hopefully get some more amenities in our pool that go a little bit above and beyond, but you'll see the same issue that I have on both this slide and the next slide, is that, Bo, go back to, go back to one, please, there you go, and is that both the slide and the diving board dive right into the lap swimming. So, regardless of what you do, you only have one particular feature at a time. So, if you're having lap swimming, no one's able to access the diving board or the slide, and vice versa. So, that's kind of what I see as one of the detriments to this particular design. Aaron, you can go to the next one.
Same thing with Grove, built a new bath house, had more shade structures, a bigger zero entry area, a few more play features out here for the kids that are typically six and under. Again, the lap swimming over here, two slides, one open, one closed, one speed slide, one a slower slide, then two diving boards over here, one high and one low. But again, the same issue we have on the Lindsay pool is the same issue that we had on the Grove pool, in the fact that you can't do lap swimming while you're also diving and utilizing that, that particular area over there. So, go ahead a couple of slides to Tiffany Springs. Go ahead, go one more, right here. So, what I was thinking, since we want to have as many people utilizing the pool at any one point in time, and having as many activities at the pool at one point in time, I was thinking about, instead of having, building a separate swim, lap area like they did, just renovate our current one. We've got good guts, we've got good pumps, we're going to have to probably redeck it, then find some type of sealant that goes on the bottom of the pool, then we'll have to take a look at eliminating the lip that's on our deep end so we can have diving boards again. But with that, all that, with all that being said, that would keep us away from having to stop one activity and start another activity, so people can't do lap swimming if they want because at any point in time, you can still go through there and, and porting off the lanes, which are different than the other two designs. Now, there's no way that we're going to be able to afford everything that's over here, but I do like the idea of having a new bath house, utilizing our existing bath house for all of our park equipment. Right now, in order for the guys to mow, weed eat, and maintain the property and the buildings and all the different features that we have, they have to truck and trailer that stuff in. So, it would be nice to be able to have a place where the guys can just go and get everything out of an existing facility and without having to truck and trailer it over there to do any work at the park. Finally, over here on this side, again, they have zero entry play structure over here for the kids that are of smaller age, and I'm sure that this is a winter picture since everything's dried up, but they will probably have different shade structures that go around that, that area. Those things are primo land, it's underneath the shade, anytime that you take your kids or grandkids out to a facility, so I learned a hard way that you can never have enough shade, either by a pool or splash pad, so we always try to build those in there as much as possible. But not necessarily a lazy river, but maybe just a couple other slides with a smaller pool right here that people can just go into on the slides over there, and you can probably take this whole feature and move it closer over here in this area. I mean, they got lazy rivers, whirlpools, and something else over there, oh, they have another kind of splash pad type feature over here in the center. We're not looking at all of those different things, we're just looking at something that's more, much more functional for maybe what our vision is going forward in a pool. So, right now, the discussions I've had is try to reuse the existing pool for lap swimming and make some diving, then come back and build enough features over here off to the side of it to make it something that is more along what the communities of King Fisher, Cushing, Steelwater, and Edmond have, so. With all that being said, my clothes are getting dry, I'll answer any questions after I get a drink of lemonade.
You must say Kool-Aid.
All right.
Drink a Kool-Aid.
Aaron, can you go to the next slide? There you go. Also, one of the issues that I have with our current bath house, it's art deco, but it doesn't match our entryway, and it doesn't match Highland Hall. So, Bank of Oklahoma throughout the state have been utilizing those particular bricks that look much more like the sandstone that we have at turn of the century that is our entryway into Highland Park and of course, Highland Hall. So, I think that if we construct the new bath house, we should have that as the primary rock entering, you know, the primary brick or masonry in order to welcome people in there, and I think it will match much more along with what's existing out there, so.
So, I got a question, so on just refurbishing the pool part, how much might that?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
And that's it, and that's just it, is that, that's why we're having a conversation here tonight. If you guys tell me, you know, what features you guys are definitely in for or not in for, we can put that in to our contract to see what it's designed for, but I'd like to give you guys a couple of options, maybe three options. One is going in there and renovating that and constructing those features off to the north side. Back that, that view out, Aaron, to all the park. There you go, thank you. Even if you have to build out here, we're going to lose a shelter, and we're going to lose the basketball court, which are, the basketball court's a good thing, we need to build a new basketball court, I don't like asphaltic basketball courts, they don't play well, and. They don't play well and you get marked up hard anytime you get a hard foul. A kid growing up playing that type of activity and the ball just doesn't bounce as well. It's just not a good service for basketball. So, we'd like to go in there and concrete a new one out. Then also the shelter where we can find a new location for a new shelter.
So, that wouldn't fall on the sports park at all, the basketball?
Yeah, it would. I mean, that's a, that's, it can be.
Because that's part of it, that's part of the sports park construction.
Yeah, but it can be, but more or less our sports park's going to be concentrated on T-ball, baseball, softball, and soccer. And football, hopefully too. Hopefully we get them some practice fields other than the current areas that they're utilizing.
Well, and you'd probably want a basketball court at the park.
Yeah, actually, I would like to also see us have our splash pad at that park too because any parent usually has more than one child. And when they take their older child to go out there and practice, another kid can be out playing at the splash pad and vice versa.
But I thought that's what you were proposing on the other slide.
No, no, the splash pad will be a completely different.
That's a separate, okay. That wasn't a splash pad within that deal?
Lindsay had that, but their splash pad was already existing. We don't have a, we don't have an existing splash pad.
Not that one, Aaron, and the other one, the Lindsay, was it the?
Tiffany.
Tiffany.
Oh, no, 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 we wouldn't.
That one?
No.
Okay, that has a splash pad there though, right?
Yeah.
So, you're saying splash pad's not this, what we're talking about here, the pool is?
No, the splash pad, that was my question because there's another three quarter of a million for a splash pad in 2020.
Yep, it's a whole different sign.
How many months out of the year will we be utilizing this?
Oh, the same time you guys are utilizing it right now.
What is it, three months?
Three, three halves.
See, part of my thought, and go ahead, I don't mean to interrupt.
Well, what I was thinking, how hard would it be for, say, if we do rehab the old pool to enclose it?
The cost that were originally given to me is they usually run about four times the amount. I haven't checked with Kingfisher yet to see what that was.
Do you utilize it twelve months out of years for, say, high school swim teams?
Exactly.
For?
Dive teams?
Dive teams, for any, any number of things, for Red Cross, for training?
That, that's what was happened also in Edmond. And, but that was a three-party agreement between the YMCA, the city, and the school. And the school paid for theirs. And I think they paid 10, 12 million dollars in order to cover their swimming facility up.
I think it was 21 for the whole project.
Yeah. But to cover it up and to have the diving facilities and have the swim facilities and everything else, that's a pretty expensive project.
But to just refurbish it, like you said in the, was it the Tiffany one? Just to refurbish this, this part of the project, that wouldn't be 2.2 million?
No, 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 I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about the entire project from design to finish is 2.2.
But you're saying that, something like that?
No, well, that scaled down about, about one-third.
Okay, because you're saying the splash pad was a different project, that's what I was confused with. So, really, we're talking about just the pool for 2.2 million dollars?
No, talking about a pool, zero entry, play structures.
Talking about water park to the left and a pool to the right.
Yep.
Well, okay, because I thought the water park, that's a splash.
No, a splash pad's a different deal.
That's a water park.
Splash pad's for kids, like on, what is it, Bryant or whatever it is on in Edmond there where they got that splash pad deal going. You know what I'm talking about.
Pelican Bay.
Pelican Bay, exactly. That's a cool little deal.
Exactly.
Why can't we just have a pool reno and then come back in with the splash pad?
Yeah. I can see that.
I'll have to see what those costs are, but I would say.
I think it'd be an option. If you just like an option, like option A would be refurbish the pool and a splash pad. Option B would be whatever, option C would be the 2.2 million, right? I mean, three options.
No, it would be, it wouldn't be costing, it wouldn't cost you that much. You guys, you guys probably end up saving a million dollars, pause, if you guys just did that. But that's.
That's what I'm saying, option A for us, we'd see option A, option B, C, and we'd go, oh, well, we like this or.
Doesn't make sense.
But if you look at, if you look at what, what the attractors are to the way, to the new pools these days, it's those slides.
Yes.
It's those slides. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the kids like.
Well, I don't know.
That's what attracts them.
Look at, let's look at.
You know, I mean, that's what, that's what brings the people out. It's those, or the kids, anyway, that's what brings them out. It's those slides. Look at anything that's going in now and they, they put in slides.
I spent four weeks at the pool this summer with grandkids' swimming lessons and I heard all kinds of comment about no diving board. Everybody wanted the diving board.
Yeah, I think that's crucial, diving board.
Well, that, and like I said.
It's going to be a community pool if needs diving.
Yeah, and like I said, the biggest things that I've always seen that are the most popular items are going to be this play structure and the slides.
But at the Oklahoma River, for example, my wife's on this row team down there and I've been there forever and I was shocked when I went down there. Have you been down there lately?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, so, I didn't see anybody playing on the stuff when I was down there. And there's a whole lot of slides and stuff going on there in a big, big way.
I've got some other things to do down there now though.
I know, I understand. But I've been down there several times and I'm trying to find this big draw of crowds that are going to these things for the slides.
I see it.
You mentioned it, but where are you seeing it?
I've seen it down there.
You can venture.
Really, what you guys do is also each and every year, just for example, St. Mary's has their back-to-school activity and they go over to.
Kingfisher.
Yeah, yeah. So, they are immediately town. So, all those school activities, all the summer camps and stuff like that, you guys are losing out right now to Edmond, Cushing.
Yeah, it's, it's the draw. It's the draw.
There are a lot of schools that have successful pools where they work with the municipal people. The school mans it and the city takes care of this infrastructure piece and that part. But I think that the swim team and keeping it open year-round is, if they get a partnership with the school, it makes a lot, a lot more sense. We don't have a swim team.
And you take off.
Two million dollars for three months out of the year. And then the upkeep, what is, what would be the upkeep? I mean, on a yearly maintenance?
You guys are currently spending about 20.
But surely the Y though, right?
No.
No R maintenance?
Yeah, you guys are currently spending somewhere in the neighborhood of about $20,000 a year on your pool, just to open it up and get it out there and go.
So, we're going to pay triple that to open up this probably, double anyway, after a few years.
But your revenues will also quadruple because at that point in time, you guys can have season passes, you guys can have just open swim, then you have also just utilizing the facility in itself.
But it's going to be kept, expensive, or least expensive or inexpensive enough for everybody to be able to use.
Yeah, I have costs for you guys and we can get to that a different day, the shows, but I'll get that out to you guys on the next update. But all the forests surrounding area parks and you guys can actually see what everyone else charges. It's anywhere between $2 for just coming in and sitting and watching your kid, all the way up to $6 at some places. Then, of course, everyone has season passes everywhere from, you know, $60 per person to $225 for a family of six. So, it's just whatever we want to do on that particular area.
See, I wish we could, I wish we could get something going with the school and maybe a third party because, well, I grew up, that's what they always had, swim team, dive teams, and you always were kind of, you know, if you were a great swimmer, you were singled out to be a lifeguard that summer, you know, for extra credit or whatever else that you were doing. You know, they, they always made some kind of a spiff on the deal. And so, all the lifeguards were always students typically. School maintained it, wasn't on school property. And, you know, the dive team, they had the big high dive, I remember that, and then they had the little one. And they had the lanes for swimming, but.
Was that here?
No, that was back east.
Okay.
No, it wasn't here.
Okay.
That was actually in Hyde Park, but they, have we explored a deal with the school? Probably not at this point.
Not at this point in time, but I'll definitely inquire with Dr. Simpson and Mr. Chapel concerning what they have in that particular area. But I'd also know that we're talking about millions of dollars and they're currently have money utilized for all their last bond, including the construction of that new elementary school down there on Art Charter Oak and just east of us, so.
Yeah, and I, I think there is, there is an attractiveness of having a facility that's open for more than three or four months. Clearly. But I think you also, also can't, can't get away from, we want to provide something that's available for the majority of our citizens, not just a few that are on the swimming team. And, you know, I, I think the opportunity to make something like this that is a, that is a positive for our community, for our kids, I think we've got that, that opportunity right now and to make it something that's attractive for them.
I had the opportunity this week, and not because I wanted it, to field, in the last two days, to field quite a few calls on an agenda item that we have coming up at city council. And so, I actually started asking, actually, I started asking the end of last week. I started asking people after that whole session. So, tell me, let's switch gears here. What do you think about a pool? What do you think about a renovation versus a water park versus a splash pad? You know, a combination of with the splash pad as well. So, I added that in there. I added the water park, the splash pad, and what's the water park? Where it's multiple slides and all this stuff, right? And 100% of the people that I talked to and they're all in Ward 2, wanted a pool renovation and want a splash pad. They didn't want anything to do with the water park. They didn't want to spend anywhere near 2.2 million on the deal. You know, made note that we voted for this tax and we don't want to spend that money. I would assure that if you were to put out a poll like we did on everything else, or I think that you'd find that the answer is about 100% on that. I've not found one negative, not one negative towards not just renoing the pool. Okay, that's what they want to do is reno the pool and add a splash pad. And, and, you know, mineral wells keeps coming back up at the splash pad. You know, we used to have a, they used to have wading pools and stuff there that all got filled in at one point in time. People loved it. I've, I've talked to people that are little people that'll never use the, their parents will never let them use the public pool, ever, to the big people that grew, that are seven, in their 70s that learned how to swim at that pool. So, I know it's old for sure, it needs reno. But why couldn't we take and blow out the one side of it and make it as, and somehow get it to be a, I guess you'd never make it to a zero, I call it a zero walk-in.
Zero entry.
Zero entry.
Now you'd get in the existing pool.
Couldn't do that with the existing pool.
No, because you have to have enough area to raise it up and that's where all of your pumps are.
But you could definitely reno it to make it a diving and a lane pool, as we've seen. And so, how much, and then another three quarter, see, if we just knew how much that was, that's the thing. You know, we're going to have to spend, just for example, what's the, what's the design on this thing? 75,000, we'll have to spend 300,000 to find out.
Well, you have to spend, you have to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's just it, you don't have to spend all that. If you're, if you're saying what you're saying on that, that, that cost goes down about maybe 20% of that.
But that's what I would beg for the council to do is talk to their constituents and not make a, not, not just make a decision on their own. Because I'll never use the pool personally, it just never's going to happen. Okay? And so, I have to talk to others that are going to be using it. And cost becomes an issue as well. I have a lot of people that are out there that feel that it should be a zero-cost basis because they feel that the city ought to provide them a, a public pool. Now, I don't necessarily believe in that. I think it ought to be something, two, three bucks, that's livable. You start getting up to six and eight, probably for us, it's livable, but some it may not be. Eight, 10, 12, and all of a sudden you knocked everybody out of the park. Not everybody, but the people that utilize the pool. I would beg for the council to go to the pool, okay, on days and go and see who's swimming in the pool and go multiple times to the pool and find out who's really using the pool and why. Okay? It's like when we were growing up, my daughters were growing up, you know, they wanted to go to the pool, but we built them a pool instead. Okay? And there's a lot of people that have done that. And there's a lot of people that have it, I'll give you that. Anyway, I'm just asking that we make a decision based on as many people as we can discuss this with, within our respective wards to make sure that we do something that, you know, to the best of our ability that everybody wants and is not just fed to them. That's all.
Well, the discussions that I've had with, with people, they want something that, that is convenient for them to get in and out of. That's the, you know, the big thing about this, one of the big things is the turn steps, amazingly so, but, but it seems to be with people that I've talked to. They also want something that their kids are going to enjoy or their grandkids are going to enjoy. And, and that keeps coming back at the slides. And, you know, plus the enhancing, the enhancing the shade aspects of it. But just making it something that is, that is prideful for, for our community, that we can offer this kind of thing, albeit during a short period of time, but still being able to, to offer it and not take, and, and, and be, again, be proud of it. Be proud of it as a, as something that's, is a quality life, which is where this whole sales type of thing started.
See, I'd like to see those stats. I'd like to see the, not necessarily the people that you talked to, I've talked to somewhere around 30. And documented. And not one person wants a water park.
And maybe the, maybe the Y has some, some sense of that.
Let's talk about the Y, you know, the Y to some degree has issues maintaining the pool that we have, albeit lifeguards, swimsuits, everything else that goes with it. Okay, what are we going to do when we quadruple that? Because that's what's going to happen. Okay, who's going to run it then? Who's going to fund that? The Y.
Hope the Y.
Yeah, well, if they're having problems, that's a great hope.
But more if I joined the Y.
Maybe, that could be too. No, that's another thing, maybe they have other things out there.
But it sounds like they need to be in that conversation if we're, if you're going to, we're going to double, triple, quadruple the number of people going through there, can you deal with the issue?
Well, we're already paying them 5,000.
Whether it's the Y or.
Well, they might need more.
That's right. Whether it's the Y or whether it's going to be city employees or it's a combination of the two, that service will still be provided.
Yeah, I've had something you wanted to say.
People that I've talked to down in Frontier City, if you all seen that on the south end of Frontier City, with the splash pad and all the stuff you were talking about, Mayor?
Yeah.
When they built all that, they had volunteers standing in line to come in and become lifeguards. They didn't have that problem. I've talked to several people at work down there and it's great. So, I don't think, that'll be something we'd have to wait and see, but I think those people will show up. I, I know kids that love to go swimming. I've talked to some people too, and they all said, if you do that, we'll show up. I'd go out there just, you know, go with Haley if she wants to go swimming or something like that, just go out and watch people swim. Because there's some pretty good swimmers that were still here when I was swimming and I used to swim out there all the time. We had two diving boards at that time and I don't know if you remember that or not. One was a high and one was a low.
I learned how to swim there.
See, I did too. I learned how to swim there. And so, and I remember the lip you're talking about, because I banged my head into it several times jumping in, so, yeah.
That's what happened.
Yeah, that's part of it.
It's Jeff's fault, that's why they.
There you go, now we know.
That's, with that being, with that being said, I think it would work. I think, I think people will show up with no problem. I think we'll have lifeguards build there, so.
And they will come.
Yeah, I think that's, you know.
Well, you build it and they will come and then you can, you got to talk about cost and the people that are going to use it and can they afford it? Okay? You may be able to, but the other 10 people may not.
Well, and that's something we got to look at, you know.
Exactly.
And it's, it's, they may show up, but get an idea of what's going to cost us and then we go from there.
And look at this, we're spending 4,000 to 6,000 a year to paint our pool just to get it going. What are we going to spend a year to paint that one?
Nothing.
How's that?
But too much you construct, you pour it into the concrete.
So, you, that's how you do that.
It's completely different methods of construction from 1946 to 2016.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a real good thing.
I'm sure they have been painted there before.
I have no idea.
I think they've.
Well, we spent a bunch of money. Those pumps before we, those pumps and stuff, bro, that was costly.
Yeah, but.
And they were old.
Max, did you guys get a grant for that, for the pump renovation?
No.
Oh, yeah, didn't?
No, that came out of hotel, motel taxes.
There you go, yeah.
I'm saying before that, when it wasn't running very efficiently, it cost money.
Yes, well, that's it, pumps cost you money.
It cost a bunch of money.
I always wondered, because I, I just thought of five possible scenarios, or not scenarios, but possibilities here. I mean, you can renovate only, you renovate and put the cover on it, was that his saying? Renovate and slides, so water, where the actual slides, renovate slides and splash pad, kind of the whole thing, renovate and then splash pad. It just seems like those are totally fairly different costs. And I'm just wondering if, is it possible to get kind of a basic cost if we did?
You guys have that in those, right here? You can, I mean, you can actually see in there, all except for the renovation of the pool, you guys have all those costs in there. You guys can see exactly what slides cost, what the equipment costs. They're both in Lindsey and they're in the Grove one. So, you know, they're going, when we go out, that's why I need to know what direction you guys are going to take, because when we start talking to equipment.
These are the costs right here.
Yeah, it's a whole different way to engineer something and it's a whole different way because each one of those scenarios that you're talking about will probably cost you anywhere between $2,000 to $4,000 in engineering, because they're a step up level on each one of those things and you have to design for that.
Well, plus it would go, everything, regardless of what we do, would go out of the bidding process. So I mean, there's, you know, there's going to be multiple companies bidding this thing and.
Well, I think that the more basic question is, how much you guys want to spend on, because that will tell me everything, what we can do. We currently have a budget of $2 million for construction. Do you guys feel comfortable with that number or not?
I, I think, I think when you're looking at this, basically $2 million.
Yes.
At Lindsey.
Is that what that is?
Yeah. So you said 1.8.
Well, you got a lot more than 2 million, you got 3 million on those, those slides.
I think we're looking at 2 million. I, I mean, I know it's, it's a bit, it's a lot of money, but I think that, you know, you kind of, kind of get what you pay for and, and in this, in this arena, this is what it's all about.
Well, we're actually looking at 3 million, the splash pad's another 750,000.
Yeah, that's right.
But it possibly had a different location for a different purpose.
So what about those big domes? I've seen these huge mega domes. Have you ever seen those? Have we priced any of that?
Uh, no, I haven't, I.
Because there's no reason to look at an enclosure, I understand, but I'm back to the partnering with the school and the, and everything else. I think we'd get a lot more bang for our buck if we were throwing this money in something that the school was going to be able to take advantage of in a big way.
I haven't seen those in Oklahoma due to our wind. But the only place I have seen it, and I know that NSU built their indoor practice facility for the football several years ago, I could probably make a phone call and find out if that thing's lasted or not. But I know for the most part, those things don't last up north because of snow and.
Because they have them dumped where they open and stuff.
Yeah, it's different up north.
Yeah.
Basically a blow up. I, I don't, I don't know.
That and the humidity thing, what you do to remove.
Telluride did something like that.
Yeah.
I think, to answer your question, for the, for the pool and amenities, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that $2 million is a, is a good target.
Bruce, another place, Clinton, they have indoor swim slide pool. Have you seen it?
I've not seen it.
I've driven by it, but I've not been in to see it.
See, and couldn't we take Highland Hall and incorporate all that into an enclosed type deal? Maybe we spend more money.
Highland Hall, how, how would you do that?
I don't know, I don't know.